Good evening and everyone to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for June 27, 2023. The first is to call to the order to the meeting, and then please stand up for Pledge of Allegiance. So next, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jutser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strossman.
Here.
Alder Udell is absent with excuse. Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next in the agenda is public appearances for non-agenda items. We have one person that want to speak. David Haidt, please.
Yes, David Haidt, 5855, Pittsburgh resident since 2005. I'm on the road, and typically ad-hoc-ing things is not necessarily the best path to success, but I'm going to give it a shot. And please take it for the message of information that it's intended. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the status of the city. So one of the issues that I've noticed over the last several years is that the city seems to be in a state that's relatively similar to a startup. So I've had a lot of experience and background in high tech. I've been in a successful startup, and I've, as part of Intel's business development team, examined a lot of the details of the internal operations of startup for the purposes of deciding whether to make an investment, whether to buy technology, et cetera. And the key point about the situation in Pittsburgh is that it's at an inflection point. When a startup first begins, everyone knows what the business plan is. They know each other. They know the goals. It's a unity whole because everyone has common knowledge. And the big bumps come in these things when the common knowledge becomes insufficient to run a larger scoped enterprise. And I feel like that's where we are at with regard to the city of Pittsburgh. So the city operates relatively informally at many different levels. And one of the things that you can see as an indication of that is Administrator Breckland's pushing for the Deputy City Administrator. And Administrator Breckland was the Chief of Police. He's had a level of authority and responsibility that few of us could possibly understand, yet he's essentially calling in the troops and the reinforcements. And if you haven't read what he's written as the job description, I ask you to read it again and read it a third time. So those are the things that aren't getting done in the city. He didn't call up looking for an assistant or a partner because things are going smoothly well and there's relatively little to do in the city. There is tremendous amount to move the city from the startup phase, the informal, everyone knows everything phase, to the phase where there's rigor in the processes, rigor in the policies, rigor in the methodology, and people are held accountable. And that's what I believe Administrator Breckland is attempting to do with this new hire. And I think that the council in particular needs to be cognizant of that. The council, as I've said before, needs to become more demanding of the results that reflect process that underlies the information that comes to the council for review.
David, your three minutes are up.
Great. So that's really, that's an overarching theme of all the things that I've talked about.
Thank you.
For.
Thank you. Okay, so next we move to the public hearing on the Mayor's Proposed 2024-2033 Capital Improvement Plan, known as the CIP. So I want to open the public hearing, and we have a couple of people here that want to speak. Everyone has three minutes to speak, okay? So, and we're keeping track of that. So I want to start calling people. So. The first one is Paul Satfin. He wishes to speak, and the topic is, I don't know, Irish Lane?
Water main.
Water main, okay.
This will be the second go-around. And I don't know if you guys understand, but I mean second go-around. I stopped the first go-around, and there's no way I can stop the second. And one of the previous mayors says if we don't get you the first time, we'll pass it on you the second time. Well, this is the second time, and there's no way of stopping it. You guys have already made your decisions in the offices behind us and stuff. And that water main is going to serve eight dwellings coming up Irish Lane, which don't need it. The city is putting the water main in front of my place because of the developments to the west. No matter if you look at it this way or not, it's the development on Kinney's and Fahy's going to develop in 10 years, and you guys want to be sure you have the water main sitting up there for them. Or else you would bring six-inch up Irish Lane and hook up instead of all this big water main. But I don't think we need it. And the other thing is, if you bring water main and stuff, we should not even think about a bike lane. That's what's really going to screw up Irish Lane. Right now, it's a Speedway. We call it the, Pittsburgh's Indianapolis 500. You can come and sit at my front door from 11 to 2 o'clock and watch the races. And if you guys fix Irish Lane so it's perfectly, you know, and it'll be even more worse. And the other thing is, between the water main and the traffic, I have no idea how you guys are going to handle the corner of Irish Lane and Sine. That is a catastrophe. Someone's going to get murdered on that one. I mean, someone's going to just outright smash someone so hard they're going to go to outer space. But we do not need that water main on Irish Lane. And when they brought the water main out to East Hill, on the top of that hill there, that was because of coin well system. I fought it, and the mayor at that time, that person balked. The only thing I did was called an attorney, and I says, we'll take you down. It's Coin's water main, not mine. I have a perfectly good well right now. I love my well water. And if you put me on a water system, I can give up my two acres. I can't water. You know how much water it takes for a big garden, especially right now? So, I mean, if you guys would just, okay, if you want to put it out until 2030, I'd be happy with it.
Your three minutes are up, Paul.
Okay. I've been told already from some people that you guys have the right to go from 2027 to two years or one year. And I just going to go think about it. The people on Irish Lane do not want water main.
Thank you, Paul. So next, I am calling Julia Walsh. She wishes to speak. Okay, Andrew Hanlon, yeah, yeah, okay.
Andrew Hanlon, this is Julia, my wife.
Ah, okay.
I had a big speech prepared, but I didn't know we had three minutes, so I'll make this really quick. So I'm a wildlife control operator here in Dane County. I operate in this area. I deal with pretty wild and aggressive animals on a pretty regular basis. I've been doing this for about five years now. And nothing in my training or experience in wildlife control has prepared me for some of these aggressive dogs at these dog parks that we go to, particularly Sunnyside Dog Park. I think that's right down the road. That's the one that we typically go to. On multiple occasions, our dog has been attacked, typically by pit bulls or pit mixes, boxers, rottweilers, and German shepherds. My wife, a couple of weeks ago, was slashed in the arm by a large German shepherd as she was trying to break up a fight between the dog and our dog. Last Saturday, our dog was attacked by a pit mix so badly that his left ear was cut really bad and blood was coming from. We had to go to the emergency room for veterinarian and have it looked at. Fortunately, he's going to make a full recovery. Didn't need any stitches or anything. But, you know, we have seen multiple dog attacks at these dog parks, and I believe a month ago, I've heard this through the grapevine from people at the dog park, that a pit bull attacked and killed a chihuahua, I think a month ago. And it doesn't seem like anything has been done about it at all. A lot of people, including ourselves, you know, we didn't know what to do when our dog gets attacked. We just leave, but we realized we should treat it more like a car accident, and we should like call the police and like have them like do a report right there. We called the police afterwards, and we were, I think Officer Hammermeister said that coming here to the city council meeting would be like the best way to like just get what we want, you know, pushed forward here. Basically, it's, I'd say about four simple things that we're asking, and I think it's doable, but I'll leave up to you guys to decide. Basically, what we want first and foremost are cameras at these dog parks just to monitor what's going on and for us to then have some evidence like, yes, this dog did attack a person, or this dog did attack one of our dogs. The second thing we want is maybe a park attendant, ideally someone there to be a witness and ideally be trained in how to break up dog attacks. Because I don't, I mean, I'm a big guy, and I can do my best, but I mean, some of these pit bulls, like their owner, I'm 6'4", 270 pounds. The dog that attacked my dog, I don't even think I'd be able to control, right? And so, and the owner was a young lady that frankly, I don't think she could control the dog. And we see this all the time. And so, you know, I understand the whole like, you know, it's not the dog, it's the trainer. I agree with that like 70%. There are some aggressive dog breeds that, another part of agenda is that we'd like perhaps a ban on certain aggressive dog breeds. There's just, a lot of people are not taking the time to train their dogs, and they're getting big dogs that they are not physically capable of restraining. And so, you know, we'd like there to be some kind of consideration that perhaps more aggressive dog breeds be banned from certain dog parks.
Your three minutes are up.
All right, well, that's, that's pretty much it.
She can maybe complete your sentences.
Nope.
No.
I think you started good enough.
That's it. So hopefully you guys consider it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will take care of your concern. So next, I have David Kenyon.
Thank you for this opportunity to say just a couple comments. One is, what I received in the mail from the city of Pittsburgh, it's not real clear to me in terms of this water main and when it's actually planned to be put in. It isn't clear to me on here. And I just wanted to also make sure that I referenced that. I assure him hoping the water main doesn't go down the south side of Irish Lane because there's some really majestic oaks on that side. And I guess that's, that's the comments that I wanted to make.
Thank you, sir. Next, Patrick Chaney.
Patrick Chaney, 27 years, Pittsburgh resident, live right next to McGaw Park. Deeply buried in here on page 168 is CIP Project 6259, and there is one line in there that I've been trying to kill for about five years when I first spotted it. It says, "New volleyball posts for 2024, $10,000 on the property tax levy." Now, this is about the McGaw volleyball post because no others anywhere have ever been mentioned and is scheduled for next year now. So years ago, several years ago, I met with our Parks Director and pointed out how what I see, and he saw the same thing, that the posts are not leaning to either player side, and the Director agreed. At that time, there were only two sand courts being used. The other two had been abandoned about 15 years ago, and only at my request, at the beginning of summer last year, I asked for two nets to be added onto those two grass courts, and they were, and volleyball courts are being used a lot last summer, this summer, very popular. I took pictures earlier this year of the post, and I sent it to the council. So all of you have those in your government email. So you can see for yourself, you don't have to go there, but you can certainly check it out yourself. Now, I met again with the Director earlier this year, and I checked the posts, and they are straight up, rock solid and straight. And it's all the same as when we met there before. At the Park Commission review of the CIP this year, there was not a single word anymore on posts leaning. And this time, it was just the net tensioner winders that tighten up the nets is what's needed. So I went right out after the meeting, and I checked. And with a simple tool, the winders work fine on all of them. There is nothing wrong with them if you care to use them. And they also bolt onto the side of the post. So if there was anything wrong, you take them off, you replace them. The posts are fine, and they don't cost $10,000. I will be sending pictures of the tensioners that I took to the council, so watch for that in your email. So there is no reason, no justification, and this is on the property tax levy. So I suggest that you kill this line, and I'm asking for someone to write an amendment and for all of you to sponsor an amendment to remove this total $10,000 expenditure. Then, since this is on property tax levy, I read the Mayor's letter. The budget is tight, as it always is, but the point emphasized was this is a very tight budget. So I would suggest giving, really urge you to give very heavy scrutiny to anything down CIP that uses property tax levy money. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know how to reach me.
Yes, we know. Thank you. Next, we have BSUM, David Haidt, again. David, are you ready?
Sure. Yep. So we've been over this before. Again, the ordinance reads as follows. "The city shall separately account for stormwater utility finances. The stormwater utility should prepare an annual budget, which is to include all operational and maintenance costs, costs of borrowing, and other costs related to the operation of the stormwater utility. The budget is subject to approval by the city council." So for 100 years, settled law is that a utility is a separate department. The stormwater utility is not part of the Department of Public Works. It's a separate department. And specifically, the ordinance requires the stormwater utility, which is the Stormwater Utility Board, which is the Board of Public Works, to approve this, and the mayor has no authority in this regard. I've asked repeatedly for the city attorney to get involved and issue an opinion. It's well past time for the city attorney to make a presence known and issue an opinion on this. And if that's not enough, let me just quickly read what the signature requirement is for DNR stormwater permits. "I certify under penalty of law that these documents and amendments were prepared under my direction or supervision with the system designed to assure that qualified personnel properly gather and evaluate the information submitted. Based on my inquiry of the person or persons who manage the system or persons directly responsible for gathering information, the information submitted is, to the best of my knowledge and belief, true, accurate, and complete. I'm aware that there are significant penalties for submitting false information, including the possibility of fine and imprisonment for knowing violations. For a unit of government, the application must be signed by the principal executive officer." And I am not an attorney, but I do note this very strong similarity between what is the mayor's role as defined in the ordinances of the city of Pittsburgh as the chief executive officer and the principal executive officer. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So anyone else wishes to speak during this public hearing? No, yeah, well done. Yes. Okay, so I am closing the public hearing at 7:50. Okay, so next we move to item number five. Is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Moved. Second.
Does anyone want to separate any resolution? Question? No? Okay. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to administrator report.
Good evening, everyone. Few announcements for you. There'll be a neighborhood meeting tomorrow evening, June 28, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood, specifically at the Blackhawk Church on Astor. The meeting is in regards to the traffic concerns that have resulted from the closure of Lacy and Seminole Highway intersection. Members of the Police Department and Public Works Department will be on hand there to discuss the situation with our residents. There'll be a tote bag, a retro tote bag giveaway on Thursday, June 29, at the Farmer's Market down at the Agora Pavilion. Those are tote bags celebrating the city's 40th anniversary. Also, at the Orgora Pavilion on July 8 will be fireworks at dusk. That is associated with the Pittsburgh Festival of Speed. And again, there was some gracious contributions in order to have those community fireworks. Sine Road and Lacy Road intersection, that road closure is being extended to early August due to some conflicts with some utility easements and relocation. As a reminder, CIP amendments are due July 5. And the 2022 audit report has been issued and is available on the city's website. The auditor's presented to the Finance Committee earlier this evening, and that presentation will also be available on the city's website for those who may be interested. Moody's, our city's credit rating agency, released an annual issuer comment on the city to provide the external debt market with an update on our financial statistics. While there was no outlook noted on our credit rating, staff has reviewed the comments and believes that the statistics are in line with prior years. And finally, the shared revenue amount the city expects to receive from the state for the 2024 budget is expected to increase by about $800,000 due to the recent actions of the legislature and the governor. While the additional funding will not solve all the city's funding constraints, we appreciate their commitment to funding local governments in a way that is more sustainable and growing. Any questions?
Yeah. So with the Sine and Lacy intersection being extended for a couple of months now past when it was originally planned, we are supposed to also be having reconstruction of Cheryl and Sine intersection. So is the timetable for that still expected to be this year?
That has not changed at this time. Tim is actually just coming on, so maybe he can provide more up-to-date information. It's like he appeared out of nowhere.
So is that, is that going to, is that going to change? How long is that project expected to take?
We'll still have the project done prior to the end of this year. That intersection's going to get closed once Sine and Lacy is reopened. So we won't shut that intersection down until Sine and Lacy is finished and then start that intersection. We're still anticipated to finish this year on both intersections.
All right. Well, that was, the people are becoming antsy about it because that was supposed to be done around the end of, the Sine and Lacy was supposed to be done around the end of May. And we heard from Tracy at our last meeting that this is a utility issue with AT&amp;T.
Correct. Yeah, there was utility poles that we had to wait for MG&E to relocate and then attach to the existing poles. There's other utilities, Windstream, AT&amp;T, that have to get their subcontractors in and move their lines off the existing poles to the new relocated poles. So that's what we're currently waiting for now.
But you, but the Sine-Cheryl project, how long is that project expected to take?
We're just received the schedule from the contractor. We're reviewing it. I believe they have an anticipated completion date in September for this project.
Oh, so that's going to go pretty quick in comparison.
Yeah, correct. Once we get these poles relocated, the contractor will be back on site and ready to complete the job.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Gabriela.
So with the Fourth of July coming up, we have the fireworks on the 8th at the Pittsburgh Festival of Speed, but I know that I often get notice from, from, you know, my residents that there are fireworks going off. Is there any direction from the city? Do we ever have any guidance about what, how they should report that if they're having issues and what they should do? And if not, can we provide that in advance of July 4?
Sure, I can ask our public safety departments to put out some information. Generally speaking, we would ask folks to report those issues as they are occurring, but obviously recognizing that that night tends to be a rather busy night for our public safety folks, there could be a delay in response or potentially no response depending upon what goes on. And of course, it can be difficult to locate who may be discharging fireworks as well. But I will speak with our public safety departments and ask if they put some information out. Thank you. You bet.
Any other question? Okay, so the next we move to the Commissions and Committees reports. So Plan Commission, Gabriela. Oh, yes, and then I.
I will move approval of Resolution R 13523, CS 250623, approving certified survey map request, CS 250623, by Samantha Herheim, Agent for University of Wisconsin Credit Union, to allow for the consolidation of one lot and one outlot into one new lot in order to allow parking and travelway redesign for the existing facility at 2885 Fish Hatchery Road.
Second.
So I have Samantha Herheim wishes to speak, answer any question if needed, and then Cheryl Waisenwell, also she wishes to speak in support and answer question if needed. So I don't know, you want to speak, Samantha? Yeah, so if you want to.
I'm able to connect him. No, that's all right. Thanks for having us. So this proposal plans to expand the existing UW Credit Union drive-through and parking lot on their Fish Hatchery Road site. They recently purchased a remnant parcel from the city of Pittsburgh. And so this is minor improvements to that parcel to improve some queuing problems with their drive-up and also provide a separate connection from their parking area to the driveway that comes off of Ochala that then goes to the signalized intersection at Fish Hatchery Road. There will be a retaining wall for some staff parking spots and landscaping improvements included. And basically, just here if you have any questions.
Any question? No. Okay. All, Will? Okay.
Yeah. Does the additional parking, is that going to imply a need for water retention facilities?
All of the new impervious area is less than 5,000 square feet, so we will not have additional stormwater management on site. We have done stormwater kelks to make sure that the stormwater, that there's no problems with the stormwater going to the downstream facilities. We have submitted a stormwater management report to Public Works, and they've approved that.
Any other question? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 135 dash 23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next.
I move approval of Ordinance 2023-012, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ 250723, by Samantha Herheim, Agent for University of Wisconsin Credit Union, to rezone property from AT, Transitional Agriculture, to BP, Business Professional in order to update zoning to for the existing business facility associated with 2885 Fish Hatchery Road.
Second.
And this is the corresponding ordinance to go along with that one that we just voted on.
Any questions? No? All those in favor of Ordinance 2023-012, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. So next. So next?
I move approval of Ordinance 2023-013, zoning ordinance amendment granting general implementation plan zoning for request, RZ 250823, by Robert Shea, Agent for Orchard Point Development Company, Inc., to rezon property from BH Highway Business to PDD GIP Plan Development District General Implementation Plan in order to develop a senior living facility with complementary uses located at 2883 Fitchrona Road.
Second.
And I can give a summary of this if we.
Yeah, can I? First, Gabriela, we have a couple of people on Zoom that they want, I don't know if they want to speak or they are here to answer questions. We have Steve Strom. Then we have Heidi Mapes, McKenna Granderson, and Connor Neiers. I don't know if someone of you wants to speak? Let me know. Oh, Steve? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
You hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, just on behalf of our team, my name's Steve Strom, Vice President of Development with Ryan Companies, and very pleased and excited about the proposal before you. I speak on behalf of a team of many people that have been working on this project for the better part of the last nine months. And those include a few on the line. Heidi Mapes, our project architect, McKenna Gunderson, our civil, lead civil engineer, and then my counterpart on the development team, Connor Neier. And we're based out of Minneapolis. It's pretty exciting to be back in Fitchburg. I say be back because we built the super target that is adjacent to this parcel back in 2012. And the proposal before you is for our senior housing community with our partners, American House. American House would operate the community. They're based out of Detroit, Michigan. They've been in business for about 40 years and operate about 54 communities across the Upper Midwest, New England, and Florida. But we think this is a great opportunity. It's, it's hard to believe how much Orchard Point has developed over time. And as we reflected on the site and the proposal and some of the comments made in your comprehensive plan, it seems like a really great fit. We love the location and accessibility, not just for seniors, but for adult children that are coming to visit residents. We love the walkability, both for our residents but also for staff, in the convenience of being able to visit the restaurants and be patrons to some of those businesses. It's a very tight site. I think the team's done a fantastic job developing a very efficient community. But also, we are, think there's great opportunity in Fitchburg. There's certainly, based on our third-party market study, very good demand for this type of housing. It brings, obviously, some diversity to the stock that you have existing. In addition to, we are assisted living, memory care, and enhanced care. So we are different than our neighboring property, the Resort Lifestyles Community, which is independent living only. So it creates very much a campus-like feel. And we're excited about the complement to, not just the overall development, but being adjacent to Resort Lifestyles. And they've been a great partner thus far in our conversations. So with that, I'm here and available, along with the rest of the team, to answer any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Who have questions? Oh, Jay. Okay.
A few.
Okay.
So this is GIP. So I don't know how far you've gotten into the actual design of the building. I, I see we've got a map with a footprint, but, and it says it's three stories. But how far into the actual internal design of the building have you got? Oh, now we can't hear you.
Yeah, with respect, Alder Allen, just with respect to design, we have progressed our civil set, landscape set, and footprint. We have defined our program for the community. I can talk a little bit about that in, in some more detail and also our unit mix. So I would say that we have a pretty good scale as to what it wants to be. We are going to stay within the three stories as represented. And I don't know if you have any more specific questions about some of the interior spaces, but I'd be happy to talk about the program.
Well, what I wondered is, could you go to a four or five-story building on this site?
So with respect to the density and increasing the story, the heights, that's not, based on our staffing levels and just generally, there's a tipping point as it relates to the size of community that we'd like to operate. From a staffing ratio perspective, there's also some licensure things that we want to be cognizant of, obviously. And there are some restrictions with respect to code as far as how vertical we can go while still providing the services, assisted living, memory care, and enhanced care. So, and obviously, with the size of the site, parking is also something that we need to be mindful of. Most of our residents will not drive, but we want to have adequate amount of parking for visitors, staff, et cetera.
Well, since you mentioned that you were, and I, I recognize your name because I was on the council when the Target project got approved. So I, I remember this. And at least some, some people like me are growing weary of driving by Target and seeing all of that doggone parking lot that is mostly vacant almost all the time. And so I would like to think about trying to find ways to redevelop some of that parking lot into some other structures that could, you know, add to our property tax base and, and do better things for the city in the future than just big vacant parking lots. I don't know how many spots, you, you, I understand your, your residents are not gonna be driving. Does this, does this property have underground parking at all?
Alder Allen, it does not have underground parking. We have sufficiently parked the community. Based on our experience and the operators' experience managing like communities, we feel very comfortable with the, the amount of parking that we have before you. I think it also strikes a good balance in terms of parking behind the building for primarily staff and then providing kind of parking wrapping around the building more for visitors, if you will, for ease of access in and out. So by no means, I think we've done a nice job of shielding and balancing the parking throughout the site. But we are very comfortable with the amount of parking on the site.
And a note on the parking. It's, it's .75 parking slots per unit, and it's lower than the average for the development. That's, but obviously, that's appropriate given the, the nature of the facility.
Any other questions? Bill?
Just along the same lines as Alder Allen. I guess I was wondering, you know, why wasn't the first building taller? So you wouldn't need the second building. And you had said something about codes for, that you have to follow for, you know, assisted living, memory care, et cetera. Can you say more about that? Because I, I too, you know, I, I would like to preserve as much green space as possible, which means let's not cover another three and a half acres. Right? And so if we can go up, that would be great.
Yeah. Alder Jutser, it, it really is incumbent on, in order to operate under assisted living licensure, Department of Health drives those code requirements. And so just at a real high level, based on our requirements for licensure and the assisted living, what we deem as the RCAC license portion of the building, that is a wood frame structure. And we are limited in terms of the number of stories we can build to and provide that service to our residents. With respect to the memory care portion and enhanced care, that is a steel stud, non-combustible structure type. That is a requirement by the state. And so based on that cost to build to that stud frame, there's just certain limitations in terms of density while still being able to deliver the quality of building and make it financially viable. So I can't speak to the development adjacent to us, the why. I just would note the distinction that, that is independent living only, which is governed by different rules, regulations, et cetera, on licensure. So they are not providing those services, those healthcare services to their residents.
Any other questions? Who? Oh, Jay.
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to remove conditions D and F. And just, that would, as they move into the SIP process, that would give them a little more flexibility in how they actually build the building and what they actually provide for parking. And maybe they'll come back with the same thing. But the fact that we're putting into this a condition that it has a maximum number of stories and it has a minimum number of parking stalls, I think that takes some flexibility away from the developer. So I would like to move to strike those two items.
Bill?
Do you want to also remove C, the maximum dwelling units, then?
Yes. Yes, we can do that, too. So remove items C, D, and F.
So I, I guess I'd be a bit cautious about removing things that have already been discussed and vetted through the Planning Department and Zoning Department. And they're not necessarily requesting any sort of removal of those restrictions.
I understand.
I understand where you're at with it to provide that flexibility. But I, I guess I would caution the council in, in doing these sorts of amendments to these things on the fly, particularly without staff present to, to comment on those.
Well, I mean, alternatively, I could move to table this till the next meeting when we can have staff present.
Of course you could.
But I'd like to see where that amendment goes first.
I'll second it.
Steve? Yes? Can you, you can speak?
Well, if it'd be helpful, I'm happy to just opine additionally in response to Alder Allen's comment about this amendment at the table. But I, I don't want to speak out of turn.
So we have an amendment on the table. Someone second? So. Dave?
Excuse me, I'm really not in favor of changing anything. The thing I would add about, if you, if you look at what's been going on up there, it's pretty high density. You know, it's very high density, you know, the, the buildings that are, are going in. I, I won't debate Jay about, you know, Target not being, parking lot not being as full as I, as they would hope it would be. But, you know, that can, that can change pretty, pretty quickly. But I, I don't feel like we're creating something up there that is, is encouraging sprawl. You know, this is an in-feed. You know, we're, we're developing something that's within urban service territory. And I, I like how it looks. That's all I'll say.
Gabriela?
I'll just speak to, I mean, I, I'm opposed to the, to this amendment, mainly because, you know, the, the parking, you know, in regards to the parking ratio, that was discussed with city staff. And my understanding, based on the conversation and plan, is that that was, they were happy with that parking ratio. And it's lower than is typical for a building of this nature. So I mean, I, of course, I think less parking is great because you have less, less pervious surface. But that being said, like, I think this is already a little bit lower than average. And then in terms of the maximum dwelling units, that's, that's actually higher than what I believe this proposal is. I believe that what the proposal is currently at is 112 units. Is that correct? So, I mean, that, I think as 120 is just would be what it would be up to. But that's, we're already below what that potential is. And I guess in general, like, I, this was, this is well discussed. This is part of the developers' plans. And I, my understanding is that they could make updates to this if they want to. And I'm sure we would welcome updates to the project if they, if they choose to, you know, add more, more units or, you know, reduce the parking. I'm sure that we could consider that at a later date. But I, I'm not apt to change what was discussed with, with planning staff over the last, I assume, several months.
Okay, so we have people with different opinion. I would like, what, Jay, you want to?
Yeah, well, removing these restrictions doesn't change anything. All it does is, is, is communicate that we would be open to, to some changes if you, if the developer chose to make some changes. But it doesn't, I mean, you know, they can still build the same proposal that they're proposing right now. But I, I think this is a, I, I'm trying to drive at a broader discussion that we need to have. And I've sent out a couple of articles in the last couple of months that discuss these things, like these minimum parking requirements, which are just dumb. And these building height requirements. So normally, in a PDD district, we don't have a building height requirement. This is being added as a condition. And, you know, we, I, I think we have to, if, if we're looking for developers to build things that are gonna create affordable situations, not just, not necessarily in this particular type of development, but maybe in, in rental housing and other, other things like that. The only way to make that happen is to have denser developments with less, with, with more units being placed on smaller lots. And I think we need to get, in, in our planning, we need to get out of the habit of requiring parking spots, requiring a minimum number of parking spots, and telling people you can only build buildings that are, that are three stories or four stories high. So I, you know, removing those three conditions isn't gonna change anything about this proposal. It's just, it's just trying to break a bad habit that we seem to have gotten into.
You know, I think we have other, we can discuss all of this in another meeting. This is not the place to, you know, or this is a project to start this. I think we have a committee of the whole that where we can, you know, you can introduce a topic to discuss that. So, so we are gonna vote. We have an amendment on the table. We have a second. I want to ask for roll call.
We're voting on the amendment.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
No.
Alder Herps?
Nay.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Wheeler is ab, Alder Udella is absent. Alder Wheeler?
No.
Five, two. Motion failed.
The motion failed. So now we have on the table the original ordinance. Okay, Jay?
I would move to table this until our next meeting when we can have staff present to discuss this further.
Postpone?
Postpone is fine.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all, any discussion? Okay. So I will ask roll call again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is on the postponement. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
No.
Alder Herps?
No.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udella is absent. Alder Wheeler?
No.
Four, three. Motion failed.
So motion failed. So now we have on the table the original ordinance. Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second on this one. So, okay, I will ask for roll call for the final.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Alder Allen declines to vote.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Abstain.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udella is absent. Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Five.
Okay. The motion carries. So the motion carries. So. Thank you, Steve. So next, we move to the Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 1123 for the 2023 radio and water meter purchase.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Data Finance approved?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this data?
So in, in 2011, we, we installed a, a system to remotely read our water meters. And so that we no longer have to run from, send someone to go to each house and read and, and safer.
and, safer, more cost-effective. It took us a number of years to implement the system. And so we need both, for our future growth, we need both the radios that go with this and the water meters. And we, we missed getting these smaller residential water meters and radios in our, in our budget. So this, this amendment puts the funds in to purchase, purchase the radios and smaller meters needed for our future city growth this year.
Any question? Tim is here, so I don't know if you have additional question for Tim? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-1123, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries.
Next, I'll move approval, resolution R-10223, accepting a public water main easement in the third addition to Terra Vessa and a public roadway and utility easement in Certified Survey Map 1503 in Terra Vessa.
Second.
I want to give it to Gabriela.
Public Works approved.
Plan Commission, Gabriela?
Yes, Plan approved.
Okay, thank you. So what is this?
I believe as a standard, we, we need this easement to, to serve water to these, to these properties. And a, and we need the roadway, you know, roadway and utility easement to, to serve these properties as standard, standard certified survey map easement here. Nothing, nothing out of, out of the ordinary here.
Any question, comment? All those in favor of resolution R-10223, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Okay, next one.
Next, the move approval, resolution R-10323, accepting a public pedestrian bike easement and a public sidewalk easement and releasing a public utility easement and public storm sewer easement in Highfield Reserve.
Second.
Public, Public Works approved.
Plan approved.
What is this?
This is a little convoluted. Tim might have to jump in and help me, but I'll, I'll try. So in this subdivision, essentially, the developer put in the, the bike path sidewalk in the wrong place. And so, it came down to, down to this. It would work where it is. We could accept it, change things around. They, they would have to give us the easement for that, for that sidewalk and the bike path, changing it. And also, there was a, there was a change in the stormwater. They were able to obtain a private stormwater easement that had been worked on. So, there's a couple of moving parts in here. But essentially, it gets, gets us to what we need to provide our, our facilities and, you know, releases, releases the easements that we, we didn't need. Tim, did I, did I get anywhere close on that?
You did. There's just a, a third part, which is, Highfield Reserve is looking to re-subdivide lots 18, 19, and 20 into four parcels. Therefore, the public utility easements on these lots also need to be released. And then, we don't have any utilities within these easements, and we don't anticipate any future need for these easements.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Jay.
So they're, they're planning on turning three lots into four lots? Or are they subdividing each of those three lots into four lots each?
They're re-subdiving lots 18, 19, and 20 into four parcels, so that the three lots would become four, is my understanding.
Okay. Why did we have those little square easements?
Typically, the easement's running along the, the lot lines so that we can provide utilities if needed. In this instance, we, we don't. So therefore, we didn't have an issue releasing them and no future need for them.
And the, the other question I had is, none of the maps that were in the council packet were showing where the, the bike path was that's in the wrong location. Where is that? They're showing a 10-foot-wide public utility easement.
Page, page 280 shows the, on the, on the right-hand side, public pedestrian and bike path easement.
Yeah, is that what's in the wrong place?
Now, the, the easement, it, so the bike path is within that easement. It's just not shown. All they're showing are the existing improvements, not, not what was proposed as part of the project and constructed. So within that dashed line that you see that calls out the easement, the bike path and sidewalks within that area. And typically, that's how it's done with sketch and legals. Because the sketch and legal just depicts the easement, not the improvement.
Got you.
Okay, any other question? All those in favor of approving resolution R-10323, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval, resolution R-11023, acceptance of 2023 utility improvements bid.
Second.
This was approved by Board of Public Works.
And this one, did Finance approve it, Gabriela? Oh, Jim, sorry.
Yes, this one was amended, amended by staff.
This is a relatively large project. You know, we're replacing a fair amount of old water main in our system. This is a, I, I view this as taking care of our, taking care of the, the blocking and tackling. You know, our infrastructure that needs replacement, we're doing that. We had two bids on this. The, the low bid was found not to be acceptable. Their, their bid form, the submittals didn't match, and their references were not good. So, council decided to go with Speedway Sand and Gravel, who's existing, writing existing work for us on this. And, so again, there's a number of, number of projects wrapped up in this, in this single proposal.
Yeah, we have a clarif, just for clarification, we amended this.
Yeah, I know, Finance, yeah.
So I don't know, Mindy, Misty, could you speak to this?
Absolutely. So we just needed to add a couple of technical word changes in there to make the budget amendment official. There's just some language that has to be included. So Finance Committee amended it to include that therefore clause. That says, the Common Council hereby amends the 2023 Water Utility Budget, too. And then the rest of that information continues.
So, okay, so we need to do one?
I'll move to amend this, as, as I read.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, the, the motion I just seconded, where is that wording going?
I, it's in the, I can read it all out. It says, be it, be it further resolved, that's clause, be it further resolved by the Pittsburgh Common Council that it amends the 2023 Water Utility Budget to transfer 160,000, 150 of funds, da-da-da-da.
That's, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended resolution?
Aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. So now, we need to vote for the original. All those in favor of resolution R-1123s, as amended, say aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
Next, I'll move approval, resolution R-11323, approving contract with Pepper Construction for the construction manager services for the police services facility. Public Works did approve.
Finance?
Finance approved.
I need a second. Okay. So first of, first, before we move to the discussion, I have someone in Zoom, David Haidt. He wishes to speak. David?
Yep. So my concern was, started with declining number of firms that seemed to be bidding for our engineering services contract. And so what I asked the Public Works Board to do is to disapprove and send it back to the council and for the council to provide much more information with regard to the process that was used to solicit the proposals and also to award those proposals. Chairman Herbst presided over a good, wide-ranging discussion about what a virtuous cycle can occur if we start putting out a lot more information to our vendors about what they actually happened during their process, how they were rated, so that we can get a process whereby they can adjust and improve, and we can, as a city, adjust and improve, and together, get to lower costs with higher quality. So I won't hash that over. But I just want to point out that you have no information here. It was sent down to the Board of Public Works with just some numbers and a notation that somebody made a math error. That there's no basis there for meaningful review by the Board of Public Works, nor by you, frankly. And so let's just talk about what's going on. So businesses submit a bid because they want to make money. So to them, it's a profit motive purely. They have to take into account the cost of putting the bid together, the probability of winning, the, if they do win, what kind of profit level are they going to see? And so, when they don't see anything of the process at all, it becomes an extremely uncertain environment for them to actually expend money into. And so, the issue here is that the council, again, needs to take a leading role here in demanding that there's transparency into these processes. And that when something comes before the council with a large purchasing cost, and particularly for engineering services, that the process is well-defined and disclosed during the review process hereby these bodies. So if you're, for example, a contractor and you see this, and you see this proposal and the award going through these committees with no information at all, what's the message that's being sent to them? They're being sent a message that this is, could be ad hoc, it could be extremely well-structured, but they have no way to adjudicate the things that they could have done better, less good. Their uncertainty is high, and therefore, they're less likely to submit bids. And I think that that's why we're seeing less bids, and less bids mean higher costs. And that's the point here.
Thank you. Discussion, please. Any questions? Uh, Jay?
Yeah, so I'm going to vote against this. I voted against the RFP, as you'll recall. And I, and none of, not a single one of the concerns that I had back when I brought this up during the RFP approval has been discussed or addressed in even the most minimal way. This building seems to be a freight train that is just moving down the tracks with very little input from any of us. And this really bothers me. I was, I was here when we built the library, and I remember all of the things that happened in order to make that building happen. This is a building that's going to cost three times what the library built, what the library cost. And we are planning on doing this with, apparently, we're just going to just sit here and vote to approve things. This is a, this is a half-million-dollar contract. And I don't think there's been anywhere near the kind of discussion necessary to be making this commitment at this time.
Any other question? David?
Certainly can respect Alder Allen's concerns with that. What I would temper it with is, A, you know, we do have a, do have a committee with some very knowledgeable people, you know, working on the design. This is for construction management, is not for, not for the design. And I, I would add, I have a lot of trust in the person that, that worked, kind of worked through this contract. Mr. Paul Woodard, who was our city engineer for, you know, almost three decades, came back to help us with this, that, you know, things were done right. You know, I, I say what you, say what you want about Paul, but he, he, things were, things were always done right. You know, the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. And so, you know, the fact that he was involved, had a pre, had a pre-construction, or had a pre-bid meeting with potential vendors, I feel we, we had due diligence through this. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right, Jay.
Dave, I appreciate that. And, and I, I worked with Paul for over two decades on different things in the city. I don't have any qualms with what Paul did. But Paul was given a directive, and he fulfilled the directive. And I sure, I'm quite certain he did it in a very professional manner. I'm quite certain he did everything as he was directed to do. My issue here is that prior to that directive being done, being undertaken, this council has had no input into this process at all. And you may have, you may have all the confidence in the world and the people on the committee. But I remember, I remember how much time we spent on the library prior to that building even getting to this point. And, and we're doing none of that. This is just, this is just being steamrolled over us. And I don't support that. I don't support this as a professional way to do business. I think the public is, is out there. And, you know, I think very few people are aware that we're on a, we're, we're on a seemingly unstoppable course to build a $30 million building in the, in, in my view, in the wrong place, in the absolute worst place in the city we could build it. I, I think we have, we have a lot of questions that need to be answered before we start doing half-million-dollar contracts to, to manage a project that we haven't even approved as a council. Yes, there's money in the capital improvement plan, but we haven't, we haven't sat down and hashed through this. So I really have problems. I, I still really have problems with the way this is being done. And I think, I think we need a lot more public input, and we need a lot more time spent on this before we go and, and spend a half a million dollars with a contractor.
Gabriela, and then David.
I asked the question at Finance about why we would hire our construction manager when we're not in the process of actually building the building. And my, the answer was that, you know, I've never done this before, but the answer was that they work in tandem with the architect. The architect can't make decisions about design without consultation with the engineers, which makes sense to me in terms of, like, moving forward with the design. But, and I, I am interested in the process. You know, I have some concerns about how this is moving forward as well. But ultimately, like, it's in the CIP. We have yet to vote on the CIP. But that has to make it into the 2024 budget because it's not being built this year. Am I mistaken in that? Yeah. Yeah, so we have to, we have to approve the budget. So ultimately, we're, we're in charge of the budget, which the design is contingent upon the budget. So I feel like we do have more control in terms of it coming down, down the line. But I agree that I'm, I'm concerned about the overall design, making sure that we have it. But I, my understanding, based on what I've been told, is that the architect and the construction manager need to be available for us to even understand if the design is feasible. So we, you know, we could, they could spend a whole bunch of time coming up with a design. But without these professional services, we might not be getting a, a realistic design with a realistic budget. That's my understanding, based on what I would have been told. And, but I would be interested if Jim has any updates about the, about the police facility ad hoc committee?
Well, I can give it now. I looked up the email from Paul. I mean, we do have meetings scheduled, but they're not till October 10th. And one's on, on February 20th. And then the public meetings going to be on, actually, November 15th. So before that, I mean, we will have not much information until we actually start this process and getting it rolling.
Oh, David was first.
I, I would just add, you know, I, I sense your frustration, Jay. You know, that it seems like it's steamrolling, and I feel the same way somewhat. But I go back and I look, maybe the man American contradict me, but I think 2016, you know, or 2015 or 2016, when we initiated the study that determined that it was, was, was needed. And so, you know, it's eight years. I don't, I don't think we're, I think we've been taking our time. And second, I, I have no intention of getting in the middle of, of, you know, design decisions on a police station. I, you know, if you ask me what, about the electric utilities and things like that, yeah. But I'm not, you know, Alder, Alder Wheeler has experience with these. Maybe, maybe you, some of you have more than I do. But outside of some things, you know, regarding, you know, how, how it's going to be served with electric and, and water services, I, you know, that's outside my area of, of realm. You know, I'm, I'm relying on the professionals to, to tell us what they want. Then we'll review it. You know, I, I don't, I, I don't feel like I want to be in the middle of, of, you know, making that. you know, making that initial design. I'm, I'm not qualified for that, even though I'm a, you know, state licensed professional engineer with 40 years' experience. It's, it's, it's not, it's not architectural.
Bill?
I just wanted to point out, there's an ad hoc police facility oversight committee meeting scheduled for Monday, July 24th, as well.
Yes.
Two days before our July, no, the day before our July council meeting.
Gabriela?
Yeah, I guess I do have a, so I, I guess I thought the ad hoc committee was meeting, I guess I thought they would be already meeting. I'm curious about, so in terms of the order of the process, we hire the architect, we hire the contract services manager, constructions manager, and then what do they do in the time between now and when the ad hoc committee has input into it? Like, is there, is there, is there a beginning, like, research happening from the architect that's being, like, I, I just don't know what the, what the, what is the steps between the contract starting presumably now and then as the design gets input from the ad hoc committee?
So the architects will be doing some preliminary work at this point in time and, and beginning to put the project together. I think perhaps it could be helpful, since Paul Woodard is going to continue to stay on staff and coordinate and lead this project, I'll ask Paul to prepare an update on where things currently stand, what the next steps are, that I could share with the council to give you guys some more information as to where, where things are actually at in this process as well, and, and so forth.
Also, I think that every time that we discuss this, if he can show up to the meeting, it will be great, too. What else, Jay?
Yeah, can, can we have that menu, that memo before we vote on a, on a half-million-dollar contract that we will then be legally required to pay?
What happened?
I mean, this is a contract that we're, we're talking about approving tonight. This isn't just, well, you know, let's throw some darts up and see where they land. This is an actual legal contract that says the city of Pittsburgh is going to pay this much money to this firm to build this build, or to manage the construction of this building, when, when some, I mean, maybe I'm the only one who has questions about how we're going to build a $30 million building. That could be. Maybe, maybe I'm just sitting here all by myself, and nobody else on the council has any serious concerns about this $30 million building that we're talking about. That could be. I'm willing to accept that. But I'm still going to vote against this, because I think this, I think the timing and the amount of input that's been, that's been involved with this, this is just happening, it's seemingly on its own. It's, it's a train that's a-rolling, and there's, there's very little that we, as the council, who are responsible for the proper financial management of the city, have anything to do with this process. And that really bothers me.
I, I want to make a comment. We have been discussing the police facility or public safety facilities since, I think I joined the council in 2015. We had a task force committee that worked for many, many months with several stakeholders to determine, they did a study for the, the facility, and then they determined where to do it. It was an extension of City Hall, it was standalone, blah, 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 blah. And then, so since, and since I came to the council, we have this facility in the CIP, and for some time we, I think it was scheduled to start like a couple of years, I don't know, before, but then we prioritized the fire station, and we moved this project forward. So, so I think we have been, I don't know, I have been aware of this project for eight years, that is, it was coming. I was part of the discussion then. So, and yes, I agree that this is a very expensive project, that I have my concern about the price tag, yes. But I think it's something that was decided to move forward, and, you know, and it was in the CIP, you know, for the last eight years. So, I don't know. And then my question to you, Chad, is this, this, is, is time-sensitive, this approval?
Tim, are you able to answer that question? I think it is important to get the construction management firm plugged in with the architectural firm, again, based upon, we don't want a design firm working on things that aren't feasible from a construction standpoint. So to try to minimize any sorts of un, unfruitful labor being expended by the architectural firm would be helpful. Otherwise, as far as time sensitivity, you know, this project has been discussed for, for quite some time. It's already a year behind the schedule that had been identified, and I think two CIPs ago, we were, already had design money, I believe, set aside in 2022. And due to staff capacity and other vacancies, you know, there wasn't an ability even to begin this project last year. So, you know, does a month matter in the grand scheme of things? I don't know.
I don't know. The question is, is some people are concerned, or they want to talk to Paul, you know. Okay, so, oh, then you, okay.
Jay's worn me down. I would, I would be, I would be willing to postpone, have Paul here and go through the process. I want, I want transparency. You know, I, I have, I have complete faith, but I, I think it would be well worth us to, to delay, postpone this to the next meeting, have Paul here and explain the process, or Tim, either, either one, so that, you know, that, that elephant is off the, out of the room, and we can move forward. I don't feel like that, that is, that delay will, will hurt us. And like I say, he's, he's worn me down.
Second.
Uh, Jim?
Jay, I understand your concern. I'm just trying to wrap it around in my head. But does it really hurt to approve this without, I mean, I'm frustrated, too, because that's chair of that committee, ad hoc committee, you know, I want to get this moving also. But I'm just not getting it that if we, we need to delay this, when we don't even know the other parts of this yet, that they have to actually see. I mean, if, if we have a meeting and we start talking about things, is it going to change us getting this firm? So that's what I'm trying to, you know, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around right now.
I, so, I'm a little astounded that we only have this one bidder on this contract. When we, when, when, and maybe, maybe it's because of what David said, maybe it's because we just haven't provided enough information. I don't know. But when we did the library, we had four or five bidders for the construction management position on that contract. So the notion that we're just going to pick from one choice doesn't make, well, maybe there were two. I don't, someone, someone was disqualified, whatever the reason was, I don't know. But I, this is, this, you know, we're starting, when, when we get into these $500,000 contracts, and this one is 587 or whatever it is, I mean, that's, that's real money. You know, when we're, when we're dealing with our budget as it is, I think this council needs to be certain that this is the direction we want to head in. Now, I want to back up a second and say that I think the police department needs a new facility. I think that's absolutely certain. What I, what I am not convinced of is, first of all, this location, and I'm not convinced that we, that the building should be only a police facility, because we have a lot of facility needs for a lot of things in this city. You know, and I, I was going to get into some of this discussion tomorrow night, but I'll have part of it right now. We, and we started talking during our last budgeting process when we were dealing with the metro transit issues, about the fact that we may have to create our own cross-city transit. That wouldn't be metro. It would be our own system, because right now, people who live in Southdale have no access to, to the big shopping center that we have on the west side of the city unless they have a car. And they certainly have no access to the library, neither do people who live in the northern tier of the city. We have, we have a lot of sections of this city which have people living in them who don't have a lot of money. And a lot of those people don't have cars. And they are shut out, basically, of all the stuff that we keep building multimillion-dollar buildings for. And so, yes, we're going to build the hub, and the hub will be a good thing in the, in the, in the Post Road neighborhood up there. That'll be great. And maybe that can provide some services up there. But we're, the senior centers talking about, they have people all over the city, and they don't have enough drivers to go and pick these people up to bring them to senior center programs. And they would love to be able to run certain types of senior center programming in other places in the city, but they don't have those places. So I think, I think we need to do some more strategic thinking about how we're spending money on these big buildings, these expensive buildings, because we don't build that many of them. And I think there needs to be a more deliberate process about how this goes, goes about, and we're just simply not doing it. And that's our job as the, as the policy people for the city. We make policy. We are the ones who are up here responsible for spending all this money, and we're not doing it, at least not to, to my satisfaction with this project. And Madam Mayor, there was discussions that began when I was mayor about the, the fact that the, the police department is outgrowing its space, because by that point, the police department had already been in this building for 12 or 13 years, and you can only store so many files and do all this stuff. So, yes, that discussion has been going on for a long time. And it's a discussion that needs a resolution, but I'm not convinced at all, in even the slightest degree, that this is the solution.
Okay, so we have a, Gabriela?
I just, I saw another motion on the table is to postpone till the next meeting. So Tim or Chad, like, it doesn't, I, I have not been convinced that this is time-sensitive. So if it is time-sensitive, I would like to hear that message now before I make a, a vote on this postponement.
Tim, go ahead. I think you may have better information on that than I do.
Yeah, I mean, they, really, the only downfall would be they wouldn't be able to provide input between now and that first ad hoc meeting. You know, with that meeting being on July 24th, and the next council meeting on July 25th, the construction manager here would not be part of that process. But it would be part of the process, potentially going forward after the July 25th meeting, so.
So is a yes or no?
Maybe.
Well, I, I need, we need a clear, you know, we need clear guidance here, because some of you.
Well, it's, the process can move forward. The first ad hoc committee and the architect is still moving forward with the preliminary work. It's just, you're not going to get input from a second vendor. That's it. So, yeah, I mean, there will be some comment loss from the vendor, but, you know, they can still provide that after the July 25th meeting if they are awarded the contract. It won't inhibit what is being done now. It's just going to potentially have some revisions, potentially. I don't know.
Okay, so are you ready to vote, people? Yes?
I think you need Alder Herbst to clarify his postponement. Is it July 25th?
I would move we postpone the resolution till the July 25th.
And I'll still second that.
Okay, you second. Okay, do we need roll call or no? Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udellis absent. Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The motion carries. So, so we are postponing resolution R-113, R-23 to the July 25th meeting, and we want Paul to come to the meeting. Okay.
I'll move approval of resolution R-12223, amending the 2023 water utility budget LTE plumber for large meter replacements.
Second.
So Public Works approved.
Finance? Finance, okay, yes, okay. What is this?
So our, our meters, meters one and a half to three inches require a master plumber to install. The city does not have that. And so we, our intention is to use the, you know, get a part-time person, retired or a part-time plumber to make these, make these installs for us. We don't have it in the, in our budget right now, but we would, with the upcoming rate case, we, we feel we can, we can incorporate this in our, in our rate case. And again, these are just for the large, larger, the one and a half and three-inch meters that we, that we have.
Any question? I think Gabriela, you asked a very good question in finance. Can you repeat?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, well, one thing was that the contracting it out would be more expensive than hiring an LTE, which is why the LTE has been proposed. And then the other thing is, Tim feels confident that we will be able to hire this position despite it being an LTE. So less expensive and also feasible to hire it. So, sounds like a good solution.
Bill?
And, Tim, maybe you can speak up again, but I, I believe you said that we were going to need this position for the next four years, and then not again until some unspecified time in the future?
Correct. So we would anticipate approximately 400 hours for the next four years, and then wouldn't need this position until the large meters need to be replaced again.
Do you have any other question? No? Okay. Any other question, Jay?
Yeah, just, I, I don't need a question, an answer to this tonight, Chad, but if you could chat with Valerie about it. Pittsburgh is currently a fourth-class city, and one of the things that keeps us from moving to the third-class section is our lack of a plumber, a lack of a licensed plumber on staff. That's one of the statutory requirements to move to, to a third-class city. So I would like to know if we hire this person, would that qualify, and what would be the pros and cons of, of asking the state for a change in our classification?
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, resolution R-122, R-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of resolution R-12323, accepting subdivision improvements in the Chapel Valley plot, plat of Lot 53.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved standard, standard subdivision. It's been inspected by the city to our satisfaction. Tim, was there a, I believe we maybe had a punch list you were, you were expecting to have completed by tonight on this?
Yes, there, there is a punch list. There's a couple small remaining items left on the punch list. We feel with Lot 54 still to be walked through and approved, that those will be addressed prior to that.
Any questions? All those in favor, resolution R-123, R-23, 123, R-23, okay. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one, the last one.
623, approving contract with Lundar Construction for the Salt Shed Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
Public, Public Works approved also. The Salt Shed was built in 2011 or 2012, and we've had failure of structural wood members on the, on the bottom deterioration. We will be replacing those with, with, with treated, with treated lumber that hopefully will, will stand the test of time a little bit better. We, we can do this work, you know, we're not taking the whole shed down. We are replacing members, kind of working our way around the building. Is that somewhat accurate, Tim?
Correct. That is accurate.
Okay.
Any other question, comment?
I just wanted to note, I asked in finance about, you know, like a warranty. Apparently the reason why, my understanding, based on what Tim said, is the reason why is the materials that were used really weren't appropriate for the project, and that was a mistake made. And so when, when, as we're doing this re, the, this revamp of it, Tim said the staff is going to be really paying attention closely, that the materials used are going to be the ones that are going to last. And the expectation is that this could last 30-plus years. So hopefully, this is a, a longer-term solution. And obviously, it's nice that we don't have to rebuild the entire thing, that we can, we can repair it, which is a lot less expensive than we were budgeting for.
Gabriela, excellent, excellent comment. And I think you mentioned that the, the wood that was, is coming, it will have a stamp or a seal on the end that the Public Works, you know, will Works, you know, will be inspecting that. So we'll have a, have an accurate record, you know, at this time. So, uh, thank you for raising that point.
Any other question, comments? All those in favor of resolution R dash 126 sign 23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I would just add that, uh, well number five is back on, online.
Okay, good.
Uh, well, number five is back online, uh, which is helpful. Uh, Tim updated us the last time, uh, last week, uh, we had a pumpage day of 4 million, uh, 4 million gallons. I guess our peak that we ever had was 4.5 and the system has a capacity of approximately 7 million. But, uh, I think, I don't know if you've moved forward with it, Tim, but we, uh, we encouraged, encouraged Public Works to maybe put a watering, alternate side watering restriction in place. I don't, I don't know if you've done anything with that, Tim?
We have it with the rain this weekend, it helped, so we kind of put that a little bit on hold, but if the dry conditions do persist, we would look to do the, the watering restrict, non-vanatory watering restrictions.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, David.
And.
Gabriela, you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to add some things to my plan report that I missed. Um, so I wanted to note, for those of you that don't know, the Plan Commission, or the Plans Staff puts together a memorandum before every meeting that kind of lays out their rationale behind each item and, and the background and then what, what their recommendations are. It's an incredibly useful memo and it's never included in the council packet as one of the supporting documents for these. So I'm going to ask that we, if we can, to start including that memo as part of the, uh, referral documents and the consent agenda. It just gives so much context for all those Plan Commission items and I think it's worthwhile for you all to have access to it much more easily than, um, having to dig through the plan, uh, materials. So, just note that for future, uh, agendas. And then also in terms of our meeting from June 20th, we did discuss the minor comp plan amendment that was referred out last week and we had a long discussion. We did not end up voting on it, um, but if you're interested in kind of where that's going, there's, the video is available. We also talked about the tree protection ordinance and we did make some amendments to that. Um, and I was going to try to send some information to the other committees that are going to look at it in between now and then so that they know what the Plan Commission did. Uh, and then the department noted that the planning intern has been hired, their planning intern here for the summer, really excited about that. And then we were also selected by the UW Madison, um, this one class, they review comp plans. Um, it's called the 360, Comp Plan 360 Thinking Project, and they look at it through the lens of UN climate change goals. And so we were selected, um, by the class to be their comp plan that they review. So it'll be interesting to get some third-party perspective on our comp plan. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. So next we move to, uh, park commission, David.
I really don't have much of an up, you know, we met earlier in the, in the month and we had a council after that. Uh, I'll just add one thing. After, after that discussion or the, um, resident talking about the, the problems, I think we might put that on the agenda to talk about.
Which one?
The dog parks.
Oh, the dogs.
And, and, uh, I was, I wasn't aware of that problem. I, I guess I'm, I'm aware of that problem, so I don't take my dogs to a dog park, but, uh, we'll, we'll put that, we'll put that on the agenda. And I would just also add, uh, that kind of parks, the, the Seminole Glen Stormwater Study was presented, uh, last, last week. We were, we were in Public Works, but, um, the, the recommendation for the design, you know, was, was made last week.
Okay. Chad?
If I may, uh, I've already sent an email to the police chief to get call for service data for the Sunnyside Dog Park, and once I receive that, I'll be sure to share it with the council.
Thank you, Chad.
Who needs to send the police for that?
Uh, typically if there's a dog bite.
Oh, yeah.
Or dog attack, that at least either the, uh, a police officer or one of the community service officers would take a report on that.
Oh, okay. Let me know that. Okay. Um, any question for David? No? So we move to library board. Jim?
Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
Okay. Commission of Aging Well.
Uh, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, but, uh, there was a rather extensive discussion about providing services to seniors who do not have transportation. And that's something that we'll need to address as the council at some point.
Any question? Okay.
Um, Jay, can I add to your report? Um, I've, uh, been in touch with, um, some staff from the Morgan Center on UW Madison's campus. Um, they are looking to, um, recruit volun, students to volunteer this fall, um, to be present at the Senior Center certain days a week, um, that speak Spanish for Spanish-speaking seniors. Um, so I'll make sure to, you know, loop you in. Um, the Senior Center has been doing a really great job, uh, on that. We have a, one of the, um, Commission on Aging Well members, uh, Janice Hughes, who's been kind of taking the lead on that project, so.
And they have a lot of, um, I was surprised, I went the other day and it was an activity with, uh, Latinos, abuelos and abuelas, painting. It was great, yeah. Okay, so, um, Resource Conservation Commission.
No report.
No report. Transportation and Transit.
Uh, we meet next on July 13th and we'll be discussing topics, uh, well, I guess voting on topics that we want to champion for the city.
Okay. SIDA.
Uh, Alder Udell mentioned to me that there's a meeting on Thursday morning for SIDA.
Who is in, oh, Joe is also in SIDA.
Sorry, Joe.
This was.
I apologize.
Say my mobile card.
Okay, so no report?
Anybody on Ag and Rural Affairs besides Alder Udell? I don't want to speak for you.
Oh, okay, so I, any report?
They have not met.
Okay. Bicycle Committee.
Yeah, um, Bike Pittsburgh has a survey that they're putting out for, um, pick me up at the border, um, just around like the time of the ride, um, different options, like a one-way option, and then some sort of final, you know, event or any other ideas that people have. So if you go to bikefitchburg.org/events.html, um, you can take the survey if you have an interest in doing that. And pick me up at the border usually happens around September.
Okay, thank you. EMS, Jim?
No report.
Healthy Neighborhood.
Uh, we have not had a meeting yet, but we are supposed to have one, I think, next week.
I hope you have it.
Well, so far, there's no agenda.
Okay. Um, Housing Advisory Committee.
That's me. Yeah, yeah, we met prior, I gave a, a bit of an update on our previous council meeting. Um, I don't know that I mentioned that, uh, we may go and do some, uh, neighborhood walks just to kind of get the, you know, a feel for the situation in various neighborhoods of the state of the housing that's available.
Okay, good. I like that idea. Tree Advisory Committee, Shannon.
No report.
Um, Jim, Police Facility.
I think we already discussed that. I don't think we need to rehab it.
Okay, so next, um, we are moving to Standing Committee Report. So we have a Finance Committee, a Resolution, Jim? And this one, we need to do roll call, okay? Because we need to buy it, status.
I move approval of resolution R dash 119 dash 23, terminating tax incremental district number 15, former Town of Madison Tid Number Two.
Second.
Finance approved.
Gabriela. Okay, can you, uh, I don't know, Misty's here or you want to start with this?
Misty.
Misty, okay.
Probably be a better, I'll turn to her.
Sure. So this is what will be the last council action for Tid 15, which is the former town Tid Number Two. Uh, the intention was to do the Affordable Housing Extension, which you approved last meeting, and then this is the official closure now of that Tid. Uh, the, the plan was to get this one closed and then we have a new Tid for a lot of the same area that wasn't developed under the old Tid. Uh, that'll be coming forward for your consideration in the next couple of months. Uh, so if this is approved tonight, next steps would be notifying the DOR, uh, filling out a form with the DOR, doing an audit, doing a final accounting with the Department of Revenue, and then distributing any excess increment collected with all of the overlying jurisdictions. At this point, I think we'll have about $150,000 of excess increment and the City of Pittsburgh would get about a third of that amount. But that will all be determined when the final audit is complete.
Okay. Any question for Misty? Jay?
So, um, I, if I'm not mistaken, we had already decided that all the excess increment was going to go into the Affordable Housing Fund, is that correct?
So, separate conversation. So we approved the Affordable Housing one-year extension. That was approved at the last meeting, that's about 600,000, depends on what the tax bills are that come out in December of 2023. So that's kind of the one piece. And then the excess increment would be accounted for in that ARPA Tid Closure Investment Plan when we do our next update. And that's how council would kind of narrow the scope on how you want to spend that money.
Okay.
And then one other question, is the new proposed Tid that we haven't seen yet, is that going to cover the same geographic area, cover all the same parcels?
So it was referred out tonight, so the, should be some information in there, I believe, uh, that covers a lot of the same area, but not all of it, I don't think. And then I, Chad, you might know this better too, I think it does extend a little bit further than the original boundaries.
It does expand, uh, on some of the boundaries in order to potentially spur some redevelopment, uh, in particular areas of the Southdale neighborhood. Uh, but as Misty mentioned, that was referred out, uh, tonight, uh, so the information should be, uh, available in the packet there.
Any other question, Gabriela?
I just wanted to note a couple things that I learned in finance. Um, I did ask why we decided to close this ver, and open a new one versus just amending the old one. And the two reasons why is that when you start a new one, there's like, you reset the time horizon for a Tid, so it gives us more time to develop that, that district. Uh, and then the second reason is, um, we just do Tids our own specific way as a city with our own policies. So inheriting a Tid means it's not quite done how the City of Pittsburgh does it, so closing it and starting a new one kind of allows us to have more control over that, those policies. So, just thought the rest of the council might be interested in those two reasons. Thanks.
Dave and Bill?
I'm ignorant of it. Um, the fact that, um, it was maybe not a very successful Tid, is that, would that be, would I be characterizing it correctly? You know, that now we got to do another one to revitalize the area, you know, uh, are we, you know what we're getting into?
I, I don't know if I would characterize it as an unsuccessful Tid. I think the, the main point is, is the Town, the Town of Madison had different parameters in how they would fund, uh, requests for Tid investment and that didn't necessarily align with how Pittsburgh, uh, analyzes and funds Tid requests. So that was the main reason. And then, of course, as was cited earlier, you know, it resets the clock. I think you have 27 years from the time you create a Tid in order to utilize the district to, uh, potentially, uh, incent, um, uh, development.
Thank you, Chad. Excellent, excellent explanation for me. Thanks.
Um, yeah, just a question, what is the legal term for what happened between the Town of Madison and the City of Pittsburgh? It's, it's not an annexation, is it an absorption? What?
No, it's an annexation.
Well, it, it can't be, because there's like a three-year moratorium between annexation and when you're allowed to legally open a Tid in that area.
It was an attachment, I think is the official term. That, that was utilized by the City of Madison throughout the entire process, is that we were attaching.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure we're not running afoul of.
I think, uh, I think because there was a cooperative border agreement that was so, uh, signed 20 years ago, that allowed for the, uh, for it to be more of an attachment than a pure annexation.
Okay, so, Jay?
So, um, I, I just pulled up the map of the proposed Tid 16. And, um, this is rather curious, because it doesn't, this.
I think with this is, we are not discussing.
Well, this was, within that context of what we took, the, the Tid that we're dissolving included, uh, almost all of the rental housing in the Southdale neighborhood, but the Tid that we're creating doesn't include any of it. Do we know why that happened?
Maybe it could be because of funding?
I'll double check what the boundaries were on that, but I, I don't know for certain that the, the housing was included in that Tid District.
Well, it wasn't Tid 15, because we've got the map right here. It was, this was the former, um, Town of Madison Tid District Number Two. And this included all of those, all of those apartment buildings.
I can jump in here quick, if that's okay?
Yes.
So, to an extent, we can't say why the town created the Tid with the boundaries that they created, um, but there were possibly different rules at the time. You know, it's a relatively old Tid and the statutes continue to change. I know the Tid we're creating now is a redevelopment Tid, uh, which has slightly different rules possibly than back then, and maybe just different goals. I mean, so it's, while I can appreciate that there might be a difference, I'd hate to say what the town's goals were when they created the Tid originally.
I think, Jay, keep that thought when we discuss this, because I saw the same thing.
Yeah, well, I got, I have got a bunch of other questions that aren't necessarily related to that, but when.
Okay.
This comes back.
So let's talk about what we have in front. Any other discussion about closing this district? Okay, all those, oh, we need roll call, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strossman?
Aye.
Alder Udell is absent. Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So next we move to Personal Committee.
Uh, we meet next on July 12th.
Okay. Public Safety and Human Services, David.
Activities, uh, um, events planned in the city. I would add our licenses, operator licenses expire on June 30th, so we had 63, 62 new licenses and 101 renewals of operators, is, is that number correct? Um, but also I add, uh, one of the things we approved, the Boys and Girls Club is having a, a very nice event at two locations, uh, McKee Farms Park and at the Trade Straining Center on July 15th, and the one in McKee Farms Park, uh, VO5 is playing, so, that was noteworthy to promote that one.
Okay, um, so next, uh, we move to New Business. Um, we have a direct referral, Jim?
I move approval of resolution R dash 132 dash 23, amending the 2023 Recreation Budget Contractual Service.
Second.
Who's second?
I did it.
No, you did so many.
No.
You need to share.
I'm try, just trying to keep the meetings moving.
Dave, what is it?
Second, yep.
And Finance approved.
Okay, um, Scott, do you want to explain a little bit? What is this?
I, I certainly can. This is, uh, what we're looking to do is amend the recreational budget as it relates to, uh, contractual services. Uh, this is a line item that, uh, the Recreation Department pays contracted recreational providers, uh, and we did budget $45,000 this year, but we're currently at $43,289, which is a indication of a successful season so far for the recreational, uh, programming. Uh, and what we're requesting here is an additional $40,000, uh, to hopefully complete the, the year, and then we will make that, uh, budget adjustment for the 2024 budget.
Any question for Scott? Bill?
I'm a little confused about what we're actually doing. The way I read this, we've collected $105,000 in registration fees. Um, are, is this just like a, a general ledger thing or what? Why do we need to approve dollars if we collected them already?
Can you explain, Misty or Scott, the math?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, uh, when we do the budget, we budget for a level of expenditures and then we budget for a level of revenues. and then we budget for a level of revenues. And under our purchasing policy, and because it's a budget established by the city, we can only pay expenses up to what you guys authorized. So what this budget amendment does is it increases the amount we're allowed to spend on the expense, but then also increases the budget for the revenues, which reflects how those expenses were covered.
Any other question, comments? All those, oh, this one, we need to settle the boat, because it's an amendment to the budget, so roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Udella's absent. Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so, next one, Jim?
I move approval of Resolution R-134-23, approving a city letter of support for a sustained dane buildings upgrade, Buildings Up Grant Application through the Department of Energy.
Second.
Finance approved.
Gabriela. Can you explain, what is this?
Misty, you want to take this one also?
Absolutely. So included in the packet is a letter of support that would be sent on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh if you guys approve this tonight. In order for it to be officially a city letter, it needs council approval, which is why it's coming forward to you. This is not a grant that would be applied for on behalf of the city, but it is a grant that would benefit properties within our city boundaries. So we want to represent our support of the Sustained Dine Program applying for this grant, and then hopefully being able to use that funding to benefit properties within our boundaries.
Any questions? Okay, all those, oh, Bill?
I read the letter, and some of the wording seems a little confusing. Can we have somebody go through and act as an editor on that?
Can you explain in detail what are-
A couple of phrases that I wasn't sure about. "The city's commitment to housing has been reinforced by capitalizing an Affordable Housing and Housing Fund." I wasn't sure if that was quite right. It says, "The city has identified four neighborhoods called the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative," which I guess, you know, they're grouped together as part of that. I don't, I'm, I just, it just didn't sound right as, as I read it. There's another sentence. "The city is requesting that as part of the evaluation is also to include," and I'm not sure how to parse that.
So if you'd like to make an amendment that allows staff to proof and edit this accordingly, we can certainly do that before sending it out.
Yeah. I move we just have somebody give it another look and maybe fix up some of the wording.
Second.
Okay, all, all those in favor of, what is, the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. I have a question. It doesn't have to come back, is it?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. All those in favor of the resolution as amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Okay, thank you. So Mayor reports, have a couple of things. First, I want to, want to mention that if you are working in any amendment to the CIP, please talk to the staff, you know, the department that you are planning to do some changes, an amendment. So I will recommend that, so they can help you to put together the amendment. So, last Sunday, I attended the Vietnam Veteran Welcome Home Picnic, that it was, it was at the Wisconsin Brewery Company in Verona, and it was very well-attended. I had the opportunity to talk to, it was the Fitchburg and Verona Vietnam Veterans, and I had the opportunity to talk to several Fitchburg veterans. And also, the city was, the City of Fitchburg and Verona were recognized with a baseball bat. This is my office you want to see. It's very nice. So also, I was invited to attend the PFC Committee Meeting to talk about what are my priorities for the two departments for next year. Also, I, last week, I met with Mayor Paul Esser from Sun Prairie. He came here, and also the mayor from Verona, Luke Diaz, they came here, and we have a very good discussion about how the two municipalities, we can collaborate, and we think we are, you know, checking on what are the things that are working well for them, and challenging and all of that. And today, the mayor from Enona was here, Mary O'Connor, so it was great also to talk to her. Also, the concert at McKee Park started, and I attended the first one. It was very well-attended. Then, on, we raised the Juneteenth flag on June 16, no, 19, and it was a very good, the senior center organized the event. A lot of people came. It was a very nice event. We did a community safety meeting at the pines to discuss the safety in, about the, you know, we have two shootings in two weeks. So, thank you, Alders, Gabriela, and Bill for attending the meeting, too. Our neighbors are very concerned. We went there and we listened to their concerns. So also, I presented the CIP to the Finance Committee last week. If you have any question about the CIP, my letter, please reach out to me. And also, I want to congratulate all of us, previous mayor and previous alder for, you know, we were elected one of the 10 best cities to live, to raise a family in the United States. So that one is, this one is a product of a lot of people, many years, and I think I want to say congratulations to all of us. And then, our, our duty is to continue with the legacy. So, so that's it for now. And next, we are moving to Alder District, and then I will start with District One.
The only thing I have to report, you know, the bus changes, the bus route changes have taken place, and I've been, you know, steady stream of calls, hoping, hoping people can adapt. But the changes, the changes have been made, and I can't say the other districts, but they, relatively, you know, they're not, I wouldn't call them major, but I'd say inconvenient changes to our district. That's all I had.
Joe? So as you may or may not know, the Dunsmarsh Allied Belmar neighborhood is split between two cities, and there's a stretch surrounding Allied Drive, which is Madison. Unfortunately, there have been, I think, four shootings within a month in the Madison side, and I've been involved in a series of meetings led by Ms. Sherey Wallace, who's a community leader in the Meadowwood area, just on how to prevent violence from happening, and also respond to what happens when there are victims of violence. Public health has been involved as well as the Neighborhood Resource Team and the Joining Forces for Family Social Worker. Dave and I have been to a few of those meetings, and they've focused around issues such as maintenance of the property, kind of responsiveness of the landlords, as well as keeping a good stream of communication between the two cities. You know, there's several areas in which Madison and Fitchburg share neighborhoods. So I think it's, it's going to be really important to make sure that our differing services, whether they be police, fire, emergency services, school districts, collaborate and are coordinated. So Dave, myself, are working with Alder Gennett Figueroa Cole, and we're hoping to also include the mayors of our various cities in, on that conversation as well, to just make sure that things are prevented from happening, and also when things happen, the response is appropriate, and to, particularly to the victims. Couple other things. Boys and Girls Club is having a teen summer camp. It started Monday. I believe there's still spots available, ages 12 to 18. They go from 4:30 to 9:00 p.m. If you go to bgcdc.org/summercamp, you can find out how to register. Yesterday, there was a Parks Alive event in the Madison side of our neighborhood, in Allied Park. That went pretty well. There's also going to be one on July 10, July 24, August 7, all at 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Movies will be shown, and there will be a whole bunch of fun activities for, for the entire family. So I definitely encourage folks to come by. Also, we've gotten some questions around residents who are interested in traffic calming devices. So if anybody has an interest in how to start that process, got some good information from our Public Works Director, who, you know, can, I can share the process with me, and I can share it with you. So that is all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, so apropos to Joe's last comment, and your mentioning the community meeting at the pines, that was one of the first things that popped into my head as well, is if we had, you know, a raised crossing or, or other chicanery in there that would prevent people from getting in and out via car at a high rate of speed, they're less likely to get in there and cause mischief. Cheryl Drive, Stormwater, that section of the road there on Cheryl and Charleston has been paved today, so hopefully that will be opening up very soon.
It's open.
You drove right over it today? Left some tire tracks?
Nope. It's open. I didn't move anything.
We've, we've been having some air quality alerts in recent, well, today as well as in recent weeks. And I've been getting phone calls from some residents asking if the city could get some air quality monitors. And I know that the City of Madison has a, received a grant, and they're getting, they're going to place 68 air quality monitors throughout Madison. I've sent an email to Jessica Price with the City of Madison for more information, and I'm waiting to hear back from her on that. Before we meet again, we'll have the next concert at McKee, July 17. Actually, on July 15, we'll have the Move for Boys and Girls Club event at McKee Farms Park. And I should also mention that the, the next concert at McKee will feature cake for the city's 40th birthday.
Oh, yeah. It's going to be a-
Yay.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning that. Gabriela?
The Courtyard at Fitchburg, the new assisted living and memory care that backs up onto McKee Farms Park, that, as the address is on Wilshire Drive, they're going to have a ribbon cutting for that building on Thursday, July 13, at 3:00 p.m. With the ribbon, oh, starts at 3:00 p.m., but the ribbon cutting is at 4:00 p.m. So if anyone wants to check out that facility, I know there was a lot of conversation about that a couple years ago. There's going to be a refreshments, entertainment tours. Again, that's July 13, Thursday, starting at 3:00 p.m. And there's also some, I know Joe mentioned the Parks Alive in his neighborhood. There's also Parks Alive in the Leopold neighborhood, at Aldo Leopold Park. It's just outside of Fitchburg, but very near to a lot of our residents. So that's going to be, one of the dates already passed, but it's going to be on July 18, August 1, and August 15, their Tuesday evenings from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Food, music, and fun activities. And that's going to, again, that's in Aldo Leopold Park. So I'm going to send that out to, is that something that we can add to the City of Fitchburg website? The Parks Alive events, Chad?
From the City of Madison?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, they're just, I don't know, they, I guess I can send it to the Fitchburg Chamber, and they can at least get it on their calendar. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, just a few things. I got to spend some time in the Southdale neighborhood last week. They have a, there's a, Second Harvest does a food drop-off, and there were about, probably about 40 people or so that came by and were able to pick up some food. And it's really valuable to the people living in that neighborhood. The stop there is pretty new. They've only been doing it a few months, but it's, it's expected to continue, so that's going on. The residents had a lot to say about the new bus routes, but one of the things that they were very happy about is that we, we preserved their bus route in Southdale. And I think, to a degree, their, the residents of Southdale are really starting to see the benefits of being in the City of Fitchburg instead of in the Town of Madison. There, we also started talking with people a little bit about what they would like to see in the new park. We have, or in the park, we have $400,000 in the CIP next year for improvements in that park. And there's a lot of things that people are, are interested in. I don't know how many of them will fit in $400,000, but we'll, we'll have to make some, you know, we may, we'll have to make additional improvements in the future. And then the only other thing I had is there, there have been, because Canada is on fire, we're getting a lot of smoke, and today was really bad. I woke up this morning, looked out my window, and I thought I hadn't cleaned my glasses. It was so, it was so bad out there. So for people who are trying to do some yard work and whatnot, and we haven't had a lot of rain, so there's not a lot, a lot of yard work to do, but be careful out there, because this, this, this smoke can really affect you in a negative way.
Thank you. Shannon?
No report.
Jim?
Met with some residents regarding the Hillside Heights Park. They have some new playground equipment there, and they're concerned about the playground equipment being too close to the retention pond. So I pass that on to Scott, and they will be talking about this at the next Parks Commission meeting, I think, is July 6.
Okay. Thank you. So, next announcement is our next committee of the hold is tomorrow, June 29, 28. And our next common council meeting, remember, is July 25. So we are not having the first one. So we have some vacation there, so people also can, staff can take vacation and relax. So, so the other thing I want to mention is, I want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July to all of the resident in Fitchburg and all of you. It's a long weekend, so enjoy your weekend, and thank you very much. And we, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So we are adjourning at 9:37. Thank you.